This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, the zoning commission will come to order at 7:00 PM. There is, just for the record, all five commissioners are present as our alternate members win and for debt, Mr. Habansky, Attorney Sullivan, and just so that everyone's aware of the procedure, this is a hearing to go over the applications that were previously advertised, and there's only one of them, which I'll read in a few minutes. This has been open for public comment throughout the month of July, and all of the public comment has been put on the website in the area that had been designated by Mr. Habansky. Due to the limitations of the meeting technology and also in accordance with the governor's directives, there will not be a... Okay, I think I got muted there for a second. So as I was saying, in accordance with the Governor Lamont's directives and due to limitations of the technology, there will not be public participation, but all commissioners have been provided with all the public comments on the application. So I'm going to read the first item, which is 40-60 Beach Drive and 24 Washington Parkway, petition of Flatiffus Partners LLC seeking a site plan review and change of zone from an RS4 to a WF zone. A coastal site plan review has also been submitted along with this application. And I believe the petitioner is present?
That's correct. Sorry, I was muted. Yeah, I'm here.
No worries. Just give us your name and address and tell us about your proposal.
Okay, great. My name is Douglas Grab. I live at 160 Stonewall Lane in Fairfield, and we have a proposal before the committee tonight to discuss changing the zoning at the lots located at 60 Beach, 40 Beach, and 24 Washington Parkway from residential slash four back to, or not back to, but changing the zoning from residential to commercial waterfront designation. The reason behind that, you know, there's a few of those, but by way of introduction, we own the Little Pub Restaurant, which is across the street, and we also own the Surfside Hotel, formerly Marnix for, boy, decades, I think, probably 60-plus years, and then before that, a few other businesses were there. So we bought that back in March of 2019 and started renovating the restaurant, because we're in the restaurant business, we're not in the hotel business. But the restaurant came with the hotel, so we didn't really have a choice, we had to pick that up as well. So in any event, we got the restaurant open in 2019, and the hotel we're still working on, you know, had some construction delays, and then obviously COVID, you know, happened, and everything kind of got shut down. But we're back on track, and we hope to open that this summer, actually, so we're pretty excited about that. In any event, the restaurant got off to a great start in September, and, you know, I have no idea if the hotel will be, you know, successful or not, but we were encouraged by the reception the restaurant got, and we started thinking about ways that we'd have to operate the hotel, you know, once we got it open, and how we could, you know, maximize the enjoyment of our hotel guests. So I was approached by the owner of 60 Beach, you know, the former site of Skippers, you know, directly across the street. I think it was Skippers and Allen East, and there was, again, like Marnix, there was a bunch of other businesses there over the decades. And as you may know, or as you may not know, Allen's East, I believe, was the last incarnation there, burnt to the ground in January 2005, and it pretty much remained a vacant lot. So we came to an agreement, and, you know, I said, sure, I'll pick up this lot, and that was back in, you know, December of 2019. So, like, we're not developers. I'm a restaurant owner, and now I'm a hotel owner, and, you know, I know it may seem odd to some people that we would buy a lot with no concrete plans, but, you know, we own a business across the street, and we've got a significant, you know, operation over there, and we wanted to ensure that, you know, whatever ends up being in the neighborhood is something that would be, you know, complimentary to the neighborhood and to the hotel. I mean, we, you know, the worst thing that could happen for us is a competing hotel goes up there, or, you know, something that, you know, devalues the investment we have across the street. So in conversations with various town officials, and zoning, and building, and economic development, and, you know, you know, you know, sort of a who's who of people to ask questions, you know, we tried to figure out, you know, what the best approach would be, and, you know, based on those conversations, before we did anything, we had to change the zoning back to waterfront, or back to something commercial. We're not going to go build homes there. You know, it's been a vacant lot for, you know, 15 years now. There's been a couple of different home developers in there, each with approved plans to build a subdivision, and none of those have really come to fruition. So I'm not sure if, at the end of the day, they just decided that it doesn't make sense to build homes there, or, you know, it just, the economics don't work out. But for whatever reason, it was a vacant lot, and, you know, it fell into our hands, and, you know, we said, okay, fine, let's, you know, try to, you know, clean this thing up and start, you know, thinking about what we're going to do with it. So literally the day we closed on the lot, we started cleaning it up and just, you know, grading it, taking out the other asphalt, and, you know, hired a landscape designer just so that anything we did would be useful for anything we did later on, you know. So we didn't waste any time or money there, we had to clean the thing up regardless, it was an eyesore. We have a business across the street, there's another business next to it, and rather than leave it just another unimproved lot, you know, down in that area, I mean, we have one right next to us at 55 Washington, which is a crater where the former skating rink used to be. You know, the way we like to run things is, if we own it, we'll take responsibility for it, we take responsibility for it, I'm going to make sure it looks good, you know, so that the people in the neighborhood are not bothered by it. And I, my sense is that it probably looks better now than it has in, you know, any time over the past 15 years. And any work we've done there has been in conversation or in concert with the various town officials. So we've had building down there, we've had zoning down there, we've had engineering down there, we've had public works down there. So we're just trying to, you know, step our way through this thing, clean it up, and then figure out what we're going to do with it later. So the first step in figuring out what we're going to do with it later is to get the zoning change back to something where it would reflect, you know, our intentions for the lot. Our intentions for the lot are, you know, we really don't have any other than it's going to be complimentary to the neighborhood and complimentary to the hotel. So we're not interested in buying homes or building homes, and, you know, we're a commercial enterprise. You know, so based on that, and also based on the town of Stratford's plan of conservation and development, you know, commercial zoning, and in particular waterfront zoning is the preferred zoning for that area. So we're requesting a change to waterfront zoning so we can move on with our thinking and figure out what we're going to do with it down the road.
Okay, questions from commissioners? I'll look for hands, or Mr. Henrik, would you like to start?
So what's the difference between, you said, you know, WF waterfront zone, is that, what's the difference between that and the typical commercial zone? I mean, it used to be a restaurant, what was it, was it waterfront, zone waterfront then, or was it a different type of zone?
Mike, I don't know. Jay could speak to that. Waterfront is the most restrictive of the zoning, as I understand it, in terms of what we're able to do down there. So, but I saw Jay raise his hand, so I'll let him answer.
Yeah, Jay, why don't you give us the background so that you can make sure that everybody, as well as for the public there hearing this as well, is clear as to what waterfront zoning district entails, Jay?
Sure. It's my understanding that this zone and the history, the research that I've done, these properties, these three properties in question have always been zoned RS4, residential, and, you know, the restaurants that were there, you know, how they were approved, they were most likely, those were all legal but non-conforming uses that were there, and so the properties in question were never in a commercial zone. So the, addressing the question of what is, you know, what is essentially a WF zone? It's a commercial zone that is geared toward uses that are complimentary to the waterfront. So, you know, anytime that we have, you know, a parcel that is on our waterfront, it's ideal from a planning perspective to have it to be WF, because first and foremost, it prioritizes any water-dependent uses, as well as additional commercial uses, such as restaurants, you know, kayak rentals, boat store, you know, a boat, marine supply store, you know, and as the applicant mentioned, you know, it's probably one of the most, if not the most, and this can be interpretive, so I'm cautioning how I'm saying, it's probably the most restrictive of all the commercial zones. You know, the applicant had asked the town's advice as to, you know, what, you know, was what our thought was on, you know, if it was to be changed to a commercial zoning designation, what would be the most appropriate? And town staff, after sitting down with them, thought the WF, which is what the Little Pub and the Surfside Hotel, that is a WF zone, and has been that for, I believe, since 19, mid 1990s, I believe. We thought from a planning perspective that that was going to be the most consistent zone, commercial zone to go for, although it is more restrictive than, let's say, a CA zone, which we would have on Main Street or Barnum Avenue. But we thought that, given that it was on the waterfront, this would be the most appropriate and has the most sound planning behind it, as the property across the street is also WF. So that's a little bit of the background and history. I'd be happy to answer any more questions.
And then, so the plan of conservation and development calls for that to be expanded into a commercial, a commercial zone? Is that...
This is Jay Habansky here, yes. So the future land use plan, which was completed in 2000, the end of 2018, adopted by the town, has these properties designated as a commercial, well, it is recommending that the town identify and change the zone of these properties to a commercial zoning district. It doesn't specify which one.
And if we did change this to a commercial zone, are there certain things that they would be able to do without coming before the zoning commission again, or is everything that needs to be done there? We don't have a proposal in front of us as to what might be there, but if we just change it to a WF zone, will they need to come before us, before any development there, or there are certain things that they can do without zoning's approval since we've changed it to a WF zone?
Yeah, Jay Habansky here again. Yeah, any land use, any land use in a WF zone requires special case approval by per section zoning regulations.
So we're now giving them an open card, so to speak, to do a variety of things? Everything needs another level of scrutiny before it goes forward?
Yes, that's correct. This is Jay Habansky.
Right. And then I guess my last question, I know planning denied it 5-0, I think it was last night, I saw on the notes, their reasoning was, although it met the, it fell within the plan of conservation and development, they felt that parking might be an issue, but that's kind of, in my mind, putting the cart before the horse. If they do have to come before us and they have to submit an application, whatever that application may be, it would have to meet our parking requirements. If it was a restaurant, if it was a, you know, roller skating rink, ice cream shop, kayak rental, whatever that would be, it would need to meet our parking regulations, and if they didn't, they'd need to go to BZA. So to say there won't be enough parking, it kind of seems... We have the authority to regulate that, is that correct?
That's correct. Well, yeah, the way you stated it is correct. If they weren't unable to meet any of the parking requirements, they would have to go for a waiver or variance to zoning board appeals prior to coming before to the zoning commission for the actual use to be approved.
Okay. And then, so the old Skippers or Allen's East was on, I guess, what would Jay had said, a residential zone, but was used commercially? It seemed to function well there. I mean, we do have a history of commercial use for that space, and again, from what I remember correctly, the old Allen's East had ample parking on that lot there. But it seems to me that, although it might not have been a WF zone at the time, it was used as a WF zone, and it functioned quite well there. You know, and we do have, in my mind, we do have, we do and will have control over what goes there to some extent, or at least the ability to regulate it, or to ensure that it's, that it fits in with the neighborhood and the area, and it's not just, we're not giving them an open book to do as they please. They will have to go before us, they'll have to meet our parking regulations, it does fall within the plan of conservation development, which the planning commission did approve. So, I don't know, that's just it for my comments, I'll pass to the town.
Jay?
Yeah, Jay Habansky here. And for the Connecticut Journal statutes, I'm going to read in the planning commission's recommendation letter from last night, just so everyone, so it's on the record, everyone has an opportunity to hear it here. Honorable commissioners, and it's a regularly scheduled meeting on July 22, 2020, the planning commission voted unfavorably to amend the zone 40 through 60 Beach Drive and 24 Washington Parkway property from RS4 to WF zone. The reasons cited for this vote were, one, the proposed new zone for this property will restrict waterfront use for the general population; two, the new zone would cause traffic and safety issues, even though the future land use identified in the towns, in the town plan of conservation and development seems consistent with the proposed zone change. Considering that there is limited parking in this area, the commissioners felt that it was, it would cause traffic and safety issues for residents and restrict waterfront use for the general population. The planning commission voted 5-0, not in favor, and gave a unfavorable recommendation to the zoning commission, and signing off, the planning commission appreciates your consideration of this matter, remains available for any further questions. Regards, Susmita Toda, Town Planner. Thank you.
Okay. Jay, just procedurally, so that means that in order for this to be approved, it's a four-vote threshold?
That's correct. In order for this application to be approved, it's four votes, votes in the affirmative.
Okay. Before I take further questions from commissioners, I just want to highlight, so that everyone's clear, the waterfront district, just looking through the regulations, I'm just going to read this out, just for the record. "The purpose of the district is to preserve and enhance existing water-dependent uses, encourage new water-dependent uses where appropriate, and encourage development which is compatible with the coastal resource characteristics. All uses must be heard as a special case," that goes to your point, Commissioner Henrik. "In accordance with Section 20 of the regulations, all uses in the waterfront district are subject to a coastal site plan review under Section 3.1.1 of these regulations, 3.1.4, and the environmental protection standards of the regulation. Uses which are subject to other local, state, and federal permits, particularly in water components, must also have such permits in place to constitute a legal activity. Public utility installation shall require special case approval." And for those that don't know, special cases, there's a whole set of standards, including the admission of noise, odor gas, and interruptions, vibration, and whatnot, and requires a four-vote passage of zoning commission. "Usage include boat dock slips, piers, wharves, launching ramps, marinas, recreational and commercial fishing and boating facilities, shipyards, boat building, boat rental, excursion boats, related facilities, yacht clubs, including accessory uses such as swimming pools and tennis courts, marine research labs and related facilities, parks, open space, public recreation, marine police harbor master, and marine enforcement, marine storage, accessory uses customarily incidental to water-dependent use, including dispensation of fuels to boats, non-marine uses, which include restaurants excluding drive-in facilities, retail and service establishments," and it actually says residential on here, "such residences should be sufficiently designed to warrant its approval." So there's a number of things that, should this be approved and go into the waterfront classification, it does sort of narrow down the scope, and it puts a pretty high threshold on the zoning commission in order to, and the petitioner specifically, to approve any uses on there. All right, let's continue going through the roll call. Commissioner Vaccaletti, questions?
Yes, a concern I had was, and Mr. Henrik addressed it, was if we do pass this, you know, there was no plans for what was going there. I read some of the letters, said somebody put a wedding facility, a beer garden. Listen, I'm all for bringing in businesses in this town, that's why I jumped on, you know, to run for this commission, and I'm happy to see that something's going to be done there eventually, because it's been empty for 15 years, like we were told. So I just wanted to make sure, you know, and Mr. Henrik addressed that, was if something, you know, whatever, you know, they want to put there, they're going to have to come back to the commission for approval. So that's all I have to say about that. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Francis?
Yes, it's Deon Francis speaking. I just want to know, what is the benefit from going from RS4 to WF? You know, kind of prematurely, if you don't know really what you want to do there yet, is there a negative recourse for that? Say, for example, they decide that you want to change to WF and we pass it, what if they wanted to build residential there? Because when I was younger, I went to the roller skating rink, and there used to be houses there, I guess that's why it used to, that's why it's considered RS4. So is there something, what if they wanted to change back to RS4 or do something relatively similar to a residential construction building or house, or would they have to then come back again and change it back to RS4? Or will that WF cover some guidelines under that? I mean, I'm not too clear on that, I'm asking Jay.
Jay?
Yes, Jay Habansky here. Commissioner Francis, so residential uses are permitted in a mixed-use development only in a WF zone. So they wouldn't be able to just build three single-family houses similarly to what was approved there maybe three or four years ago with the residential subdivision? You know, I'll let the applicant answer as to what advantage, I mean, I'd be happy to give you my assessment. My opinion would be that they don't have any interest in doing a residential development there, and that any of the uses that they're considering would likely fall within, I mean, or they thought that maybe the uses that are permitted in that WF zone are something that they could work with, that they feel is compatible with probably their business across the street. But that's what my opinion and my assessment is, but I'll let the applicant answer for themselves.
Yes. Petitioner, wish to respond?
Yeah, and thanks, Jay, I couldn't have said it better myself. We have no intention, Commissioner Francis, of building homes anywhere, that's just not what we do. So in order for us to make use of it and then start investing in, you know, plans, you know, to make whatever it is we're proposing, you know, something we could propose to the committee here, you know, that would, you know, cost money. So hopefully that answers it. We're not going to build homes down there, that's not what we do, and if that's something that, well, we're just not going to do that, so that's why we're going for waterfront.
Okay, so mostly, this is Deon Francis again. So for the most part, you're considering something that's going to fall under the WF zone, that's why you want to change it to that?
Yeah, yeah, we have this, we have this, you know, hotel across the street, you know, we're going to have guests there, and we just, you know, want to have something that's going to be complimentary to that. And for us, the way we look at it, three homes are not complimentary to a, you know, to a hotel, there should be something that the neighborhood could enjoy there, so our guests could go enjoy it.
Okay, thanks a lot.
Sure.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Vigliotti?
Hi, Jim Vigliotti here. So I guess, you know, you mentioned that you don't, you know, having the restaurant and hotel on one corner of the street there, you are, you have concerns about what would end up across the street, so you don't anticipate getting approval for this and then six months from now selling that parcel? You intend to hold on to this for, I don't know, 20 years?
Well, I intend to hold on to it for a long time. We've got, you know, quite a bit of money tied up across the street, and, you know, we're long-termers, we're not there to flip it, so, yeah, I don't know, 20 years? We'll see what happens in 20 years, but, you know, we don't intend to turn this thing over in, you know, in a year's time. We spent too much time and too much blood, sweat, and tears on this to go flip it.
Do you have any reason, do you have any speculation as to the rumor that it's going to be a beer garden? I mean, a lot of, I know a lot of the letters that I received and a lot of, you know, talk about that. Is there any reason why people have that thought or that idea?
I don't, I mean, look, I, a lot of, there's a lot of certainty out there, and I wish I had the certainty of some people about what's going to happen there. And look, I understand it's, you know, we're in uncertain times now, right? And so, you know, COVID's here, and it's put pressure on the beach, and everybody's on, not even red alert anymore, they're all on DEFCON 5. I mean, so I think, you know, naturally, you know, when it's the unknown, people start to speculate on things that, you know, the worst things they'd want to see there. You know, a beer garden, I, I don't know where that came from, you know? You know, do people enjoy beer gardens, I guess? You know, I mean, we have a restaurant across the street, I mean, so I don't know where these ideas are coming from, but certainly, you know, we don't have plans for that, and I'm not exactly sure, you know, what we're going to do with it.
Okay. But in all, you know, for future use, you're anticipating it being some sort of a commercial venture, not just open space, perhaps?
Yeah, well, honestly, Commissioner, yeah, I, you know, right now, in today's day and age, open space seems to make a lot of sense, right? And, you know, building something that's, you know, not in concert with the neighborhood, you know, doesn't seem to make a lot of sense, you know, for us. So I, we, it's, I know, it's odd, we don't have any plans, you know, we just have a lot, we have something across the street, and, you know, it's a beautiful lot, it's one of the nicest lots down there, and it would be a real shame if that was something that wasn't maximizing the enjoyment of the area for everybody, right? I mean, so, you know, going to put some, you know, monstrosity there doesn't do anybody any good, you know, certainly doesn't add to the value of our hotel property, and certainly, you know, for the neighborhood, you know, who wants something ugly sitting there? So, you know, we try to do nice things, and that's what, that's what our plans are. I hope that answers it, I think I was rambling, I'm sorry, but...
I appreciate what you're trying to say, but, and, yeah, that's encouraging, I, you know, you have a, you know, I think that your attitude is very positive towards the neighborhood and for your neighbors, and I think you should be complimented for that. I have a question for you, Jay, Mr. Habansky?
Mr. Habansky, prepare yourself, go ahead.
When we approved the housing development a few years back, those houses were going to be built elevated due to concerns for flooding. Was that by the purview of the developer, or was that to be aligned with regulations? So a future development, if any structure was built, would it have to be an elevated structure?
Yeah, Jay Habansky here. That would really depend on what the final use is being proposed. So, you know, if they, if the... So, you know, if they, if the proposal, and I'll just give an example, is a three-story mixed-use building. You know, the ground floor would need to be elevated very similarly to what was done across the street at 55 Washington Parkway where all the parking was underneath, mainly because they couldn't put parking anywhere else, but also in addition to that, they had to, they had to comply with the building code, which is the base flood elevation of leave of 11 feet plus one foot of freeboard. Also, and that's in, in compliance with FEMA. So not volun, that was not voluntary and that was required in order to build those homes there. I can't, I'm hesitant to speculative, speculatively say that whatever gets built there would have to be built up or, or would it have to stay ground level? You know, if it's open space, and my assessment would be, and, you know, we'd have to talk, I'd have to confirm with the building official, but that would be able to, to stay at ground level. You wouldn't have to elevate the open space. So, you know, but if you start building large structures, a home, a building, those will need to comply with the building code and there's, there's no way around that unless you get some exemption from the state of Connecticut, which are very difficult to get. I hope that answers your question.
Thank you. That's it for me for now. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, sir. Couple quick questions on the proposal. So to the petitioner, have your, your restaurant operations, obviously you've probably had to adjust in the current COVID situation for a while there, indoor dining was not even allowed in there. So have you been able to expand your, or handle your operations to increase outdoor dining as well? And I'm just wondering if that is a potential use down the road is to be able to have a larger outdoor footprint if, say, the COVID situation remains with us for some time?
We've been able to expand on our current property and the, you know, so we have tables around back and we have, you know, well, that's all we've basically added. So based on the governor's executive order, we could expand across the street and, you know, I'm not sure if that's something that makes sense for us. It's, you know, you have to go run a business over there. And it's not, you know, running across the street with stuff is sort of an interesting way of serving guests, so.
So that would not be possible without some major improvements, correct?
Well, I, no, I, I don't know. I mean, it's, I'll have to look at the, the regulations there and other places that we have, you know, we've expanded patios into parking lots. Two places don't have patios or outside dining, so that's all inside. And so most, in most cases, the towns have been very supportive trying to figure out solutions to, you know, keep people employed and, you know, you know, help the community out, so.
Okay. A lot of the public comment that I read dealt with traffic, parking, and obviously the planning commission's letter, you know, had concerns about that as well. What's your, what's your, your assessment of how the, the parking flows there? Does it suit your purposes the way you have it set up right now? Or is there a potential that you might need to use part of that property for additional parking? Would that be another potential too?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, you know, it's, there's a lot of pressure down there, especially right now with the other beaches closed to, you know, out of towners or at half capacity. So that's certainly something that, you know, would be a good use for some of that land over there. And, you know, you know, like, like I said earlier, it's a beautiful lot. It would be a real waste to have it be one big parking lot, you know? But, you know, certainly any project that we plan there, you know, would have to have the requisite parking attached to it and anything we did temporarily, you know, that's certainly an option.
Okay. And finally, this is like somewhat of a slightly off, odd comment, but there, in some of the public comment I saw, there was concern that, that the clientele is out of town, out of state and that seems to go in a strange direction when you consider that some of the goal of the, of the planned conservation and development is to make sure that the waterfront is accessible and that doesn't just mean people being on boats and so on, being able to, people being able to enjoy the Stratford residents included, being able to enjoy the water views and enjoy the water environment. And even when we have guests from out of state, I've brought friends from New Jersey, from Maine, from Indiana over to, to that particular area there, including the restaurant right now, the Little Pub there. So, you know, as the owner there, you know, do you see yourself as part of the, being able to provide that waterfront access to people both from Stratford and even from other locations?
Yeah, no, that's, that's what we do now. I mean, you know, we have all sorts of, of people coming in the restaurant now and, I mean, I got to tell you, we got a stack of names of people that want to stay in the hotel once it opens. Where they're coming from, I, I know I didn't ask, but, you know, I, I see plenty of Stratfordites, you know, in the restaurant. We employ quite a few of them, you know, people that live there or the, or the children of people that live there. So I think it's become a neighborhood, you know, destination for the people of Lordship. And then, you know, we've brought some other people down there just by dressing up the property and, you know, trying to, you know, how can I say this, you know, you know, do what we do, right? Which is, you know, we, you go in there, we'll treat you nice, you'll have a good time, there's nice people there, you know, you're not going to walk out of there feeling cheated or, you know, boy, that really, you know, I mean, like, you may or may not like the food, but, you know, we run a, we run a pretty respectable business and that tends to bring in, you know, respectable people, I think.
Okay. Any other questions from any other commissioners? Mr. Henrik?
This is Mike Henrik. So I was, I've been to a number of different places with friends of mine over the last couple of months. One of the things we've done here in Connecticut because of COVID and we're kind of forced into the situation is to allow a lot of these restaurants to expand into the open spaces, into open air, create new, new spaces. Kind of a visionary thing if you look at it. And it took, it took a pandemic to get us to that point where we're allowed to do that, including, including your place, Little Pub, you know, a lot of restaurants in town. But everybody I've talked to said they really love the idea of the outdoor seating and the fresh air, especially down where you are. I've been there a number of times with the picnic tables in the back, amazing views of water. I was never a fan of the residential change or the residential use in that area. I thought it just wouldn't have fit into the neighborhood. It's, and, and when I go places down south, you see some of these places that are developed on the waterfront and, and it takes kind of a visionary approach to get them to where they are. It was like, who started at point A and said, we're going to make this, this, you know, like Merle's Inlet, the Marsh Walk and places like that? Do you see yourself as a visionary? Doug, is that something, I mean, I know you don't have plans, but, but it sounds like that's kind of the route you're going? Are you trying to create?
I, I, yeah, I appreciate it. I, I can't, I can't answer that. I'm not touching that with a 10-foot pole. You'll have to ask my wife. But she, you know, look, we, we have a history at Little Pub of taking over, you know, older buildings that have, you know, passed through generations of families. I mean, you know, starting in Ridgefield, you know, and then, you know, even in Greenwich. I mean, most of these places have been restaurants for decades, right? And they kind of get a little bit rundown and, and our MO is we come in and we just improve the space and re-energize it and start, you know, bringing a, a sense of energy and a sense of fun to it. And that tends to, you know, travel throughout the, the neighborhood, right? I mean, so everything kind of, you know, picks up a little bit, gets a little bit nicer. So visionary is a little strong, although I do appreciate that, but we're just trying to, you know, look, we're trying to have fun and do the right thing in the neighborhoods. You know, we're trying to be good community members and, you know, just, you know, be there for people. We're people pleasers. That's, that's what we are at our core.
Thanks.
Okay, Mr. Francis?
What's your name? Doug? I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's Doug.
Doug, so, this is, I don't know, it's a question. So why, if you really don't have a plan, not that I'm, you know, I'm against it or for, you know, I'm just, you know, just picking your brain, if you don't really have a plan, why go for WF zone now instead of waiting till you kind of want to see or, you know, come with a creative plan of, you know what, this is what I want to do here, now I need to go for the zoning, zoning application? Why now when you don't really have a clarified plan?
No, I got you. No, there's, well, there's two answers to that. One is that we don't intend to build any residential. But secondly is that, you know, this lot came with a set of plans that are, you know, 18 pages deep, you know, that cost, you know, tens of thousands of dollars for, you know, some guy to figure out, you know, a subdivision of three homes. Even the lot next door, you know, 55 Washington has a set of plans which probably cost tens of thousands of dollars to build nine condos. So, you know, in order to come up with a plan for stuff, that takes time, that takes money and knowing that our end goal is not to build homes there, for the way I look at it is the first step is, all right, fine, you know, let me just make sure we can, you know, start thinking along these lines here. Let's just get it to the right zoning and then whatever we do there is just based on the committee's approval, right? Okay, here's an idea, here's our plan, okay, Doug, fix that, no, change that, we like that, we don't like that, do this, the other thing. Okay, fine. So then we work through it. But at least the zoning question, Commissioner Francis has answered and I don't have to, you know, spend tens of thousands of dollars on engineering studies and everything else and then come in to see you all and you're like, hey, well, we don't like it, but then, then what do I do, right? So I'd just rather, you know, answer that question right off the bat and then just, you know, move from jump street right there, right?
Great, great answer. I just, you know, I was just curious.
Okay, any further questions? Mr. Vigliotti?
Hi, Jim Vigliotti again. So just to kind of, you, you mentioned that you want to use the space and you mentioned you're, you're going to be opening your hotel. So conceivably, there's going to be some connection. In other words, you know, the space might be used by the hotel guests, so there won't be additional people, you won't be necessarily trying to draw in twice as many people, right? So you're going to be bringing people in that are going to be visiting your restaurant, staying at your hotel, then another entity that's going to be doing, you know, also drawing people in? So there might be some, I don't know, overflow is the right word, but you're, you're, you're looking at something that's going to complement the, the establishments that you already have and, and people from Surfside are going to just be able to use that space without any additional parking burden or, or traffic? Is, is, is that, I don't, I don't know, is that part of your thinking?
Yeah. Well, I mean, we have to complement the hotel, but I, I don't think it would be restricted just to hotel guests, you know? Anything down there, if it's, you know, attracted to the public, we think anybody should be able to go and enjoy it. I mean, like, the worst thing we could do there is, you know, build something beautiful and then, you know, tell the people of the neighborhood they can't go in and, and use it, right? I mean, so we have to strike the right balance between being complimentary, but at the same time, it has to, has to be accessible. So, you know, we're not, you know, we have no big plans to bring more people to the, to the area. Plenty of people down there now. You know, when the hotel opens, there's going to be, you know, some more people down there and they'll be looking for stuff to do, you know? I mean, so it's a beautiful neighborhood, you know? And like Jay was saying, maybe kayak rentals, maybe bike rentals, I, I don't know. I mean, there's all sorts of stuff that, that goes along with a hotel, you know, that when you go to a place, you know, what do you want to go do? I mean, right now, your, your choices would be, okay, I'm going to walk along the seawall, I'm going to go to the beach, you know, maybe I'll go to Little Pub, maybe I'll go to Riley's, maybe I'll go to Lordship Deli and get a slice of pizza, you know, and, and walk to the, the lighthouse. I mean, there should be something else for folks to do down there, I think. And that's pretty much what our, what our, what our, you know, rough thinking is anyway, right?
Great, thank you.
Okay, last call. Anybody else? If not, we'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
Before you do that, Chairman Solhavy, my name is Dave Driscoll. I live at 59 Jefferson Street and I just want to object on the record that this is a closed meeting for public.
This is public, this is public, Mr. Chairman, public.
Yes, sir, hold on.
Let me just finish, if I could, please. Your agenda posted on the town website. So you, you're, you can unmute me, you can mute me again, but your agenda said it would be a remote public hearing. There's no technology.
Chris, you're muted.
I'm on the system. I'm just going to be on record to objecting to the closed.
Chris, you're muted. Chris, you're muted.
Okay, I'm back on. For the record, we have, just so that it is abundantly clear, and I realize that if I open and allow one person to speak, then every, I should be able to allow everyone. But right now, we have set out a procedure in accordance with the executive orders issued by Governor Lamont, where we are following a procedure where we are taking the verbal presentations from the applicant. Public comment has been open for over a month. It is available in public and all commissioners have had access to it and have been able to read it. And it is proven by the fact that most commissioners have referenced that in their comments and their questions during the hearing and will no doubt be referencing the public comment as we move into debate. This is the procedure that we have established in accordance with our council, council and with the planning and zoning administrator, keeping in mind the executive orders of the governor. So procedurally, I am staying to the procedure that was set out. It has been abundantly clear and we followed this with every application since April. With that, Mr. Henrik, you have a motion, sir?
Make a motion to close.
Motion to close? Is there a second? Mr. Vigliotti? Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
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 Oppose no? Carries unanimously, the public hearing is now closed. We will move into our administrative agenda, starting at 7:48. And first item on the agenda is the petition of 4060 Beach Drive, 24 Washington Parkway Planet Trust Partners LLC, site plan review and change of zone from an RS4 to a WF zone.
Mr. Chairman?
Can I take off the table?
Make a motion to take it off the table.
Motion by Mr. Henrik, is there a second?
Okay.
Mr. Vigliotti, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close no? Carries unanimously. It's on the, it's on the, open for discussion, for motion.
And make a motion to approve?
Motion to approve by Mr. Henrik, is there a second?
Second by Commissioner Vacola.
Second by Commissioner Vacola. Move, has been moved and seconded. We are now in a period of debate and discussion. And just as an FYI for members, as you may guess, this is, has the potential for post-hearing litigation. So I would advise that we will use the procedure that we did with previously, where we must come to a consensus on the reasons for our approval or denial, which we will then ask for your concurrence or objection to, so it's clear this is a collective decision of the commission. And this, due to the unfavorable recommendation of the planning commission, there's a four-vote threshold for passage. Okay? Debate.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Henrik.
So first, this, this zone change meets with our plan of conservation and development. Again, this is something that the town spent a lot of time and effort to develop and come up with, all of our land use boards voted on it and approved it. There was a lot of public input. So based on that, it, it meets our plan of conservation and development. We don't know what they're going to put there, but we do have, because it needs a special case, they will need to come back to us again before any type of approval. But it, it doesn't make sense to put the, the cart before the horse. You know, why go up and get a plan when, when it's not zoned for that plan? Get the, get the, get the zone changed first and then put the plan together. Why put a plan together when you can't even do it at this point? So I, I understand the reasoning to that, but we, we do have this, this say, we do have parking criteria. It needs to fit into the neighborhood. There's a whole bunch of different things. We've got a list of potential things that can go down there, so it's not just an open book as to what they can. It is, the WF is a very restrictive zone and, and it allows us, again, another, another opportunity to look at what they're doing when it comes and, and to make an intelligent and, and to make an intelligent decision based on, on an application that's presented. But right now, what they're looking for is a zone change. And again, that meets our plan of conservation and development. So, um, they've been great neighbors to this point. Uh, it's my impression by what he said, they'll continue to do that. But if anybody's been down there in the area, they know they're making great strides down there. They've made some huge improvements to the property. Marnix was, was a landmark, but, you know, it started in the, probably the forties or fifties and not a lot had been done. Uh, but now, now, now it's a place to go to. For people in Stratford or not in Stratford, one of the things we try to encourage is new business, not only for our residents, but for out of town, kind of a destination. Um, and I think that's kind of what they're trying to create there. And again, we have the, the ability to regulate the parking and, and the type of development that goes there. So we're not, we're not giving it away. So, uh, for those reasons, I would be in favor of it.
Okay, thank you, sir. Mr. Vacola, debate.
Yes, I'm, uh, happy to say that, you know, that we are gonna have the final say when they come back with the plans. That's what was my concern. And I'd like to see something go there. We had skippers there before Allen's East. Um, it was always used for something like that, for, you know, restaurant or whatever, gonna use it. But they've done a nice job over there with Little Pub, with the hotel, like you said, or motel coming in. For people to come into this town to wanna do other things, you'll open it up to hopefully something, a new adventure for these people to use this. So I'm in favor of it also for the change and see what he can bring to us.
Okay, thank you, sir. Commissioner Francis?
Uh, yes, so basically, just for more clarity, I mean, kind of, Mike kinda said, um, something about, um, they would have to come back to us anyway, um, even if we did approve the WF zone. So basically, if they, uh, garden or, um, what was the other one, uh, from the comments? Um, wedding. Yeah, wedding facility. And so if they did decide to do something like that, they would still have to come to us with a plan for parking. Uh, we, we then would be able to address the safety issues. So this is not just giving them just the leeway just to do anything. They have to come back and see us, correct?
Correct, sir.
Okay, um, I mean, if, if that's the case, and, you know, they're trying to plan ahead, which, you know, I'm in that field, so I understand where he's coming from. Um, but, you know, if he's gonna do something in that realm in the WF zone, regardless, he knows that's what his, his goal is. So I, I mean, I see no reason not to approve the WF zone.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Mr. Vigliotti?
Um, uh, you know, I, I think, uh, approaching this meeting tonight, I, um, was sensitive to a lot of the public comment. But a lot of the public comment, uh, centers on, uh, Beer Garden and centers on, you know, people coming in from, uh, out of town. And, you know, that's, to me, seems like it should be a separate issue to, uh, what we're trying to decide here. And, um, you know, to have, uh, that, those empty lots there for all the years that we've had them, you know, that's why I voted in favor of the developer who wanted to put residences there. Uh, 'cause I, I felt at least those lots were gonna be used. Um, you know, um, so in order to create something where there's gonna be, um, uh, public use, use, uh, by the, uh, people that are gonna be coming in to, uh, patronize this business, uh, it seems like a good use of property. And, um, I, I don't see how, uh, developing these, uh, lots is gonna make the, um, I don't know. Like, I mean, I, I feel like maybe there's two separate issues concerning, uh, safety and people from out of state and traffic and stopping at stop signs and all those other issues that a lot of the public comment, uh, addresses. Uh, so, so in terms of, of, of changing this to a waterfront or future commercial development, I think it's, um, I think it's in the town's best interest. And I think in the long run, we're gonna be, it's gonna be, uh, a benefit to the town.
Uh, thank you, sir. I think most commissioners have covered, uh, a lot of my thoughts as well. Um, and, you know, I'm, I'm gonna go back to a point I made during the hearing, which was that, um, the P O C D encourages public access to the waterfront. And that's been something that Stratford has some of the longest waterfront in Connecticut, when you consider our coast on the Houston River and on Long Island Sound. And, you know, one of the sad realities of, uh, having a, um, uh, a residential approval on that property is that, at, should it have been built to completion, um, that waterfront, ability to appreciate the waterfront and to enjoy the waterfront is now limited to just the people that reside in that house and any of their invited guests. And, you know, it cuts off the access to the public, regardless if they're from Stratford or whether from a neighboring town or a neighboring state. Um, that area has traditionally been a, uh, had restaurants, as, as has come out in the testimony. And, uh, the fact that it's been sat vacant for many years, fifteen years, um, it sees that, that it's, it's underutilized. And, and recently, I was over in Clinton, Connecticut, and they have a very nice waterfront area with multiple restaurants there. That is, uh, uh, you know, something I think that we can emulate. You know, and I was glad to see that the, uh, applicant also brought out that there was the potential for additional parking for his, for the uses there. Um, he's not, did not seem to indicate that whatever use eventually comes, uh, would, you know, go from corner to corner of the lot. Um, I mean, he's a, obviously, I've been there when it's been fairly busy and, you know, parking is, is at a premium. So that might be something that could help alleviate some of the concerns that the, the planning commission had brought out. Although I, I find it hard that they were able to come to some of those conclusions with, without having the solid proposal in front of them. Um, I'm glad we, uh, went over the, um, you know, looked a little bit deeper at the WF regulation. Because, I mean, when you think about it, it is the more restrictive. And the fact that the applicant chose this, uh, I, I think speaks well that this is not gonna be something, um, you know, slipshod, that this is something that is going to conform to the waterfront and enhance the waterfront. And I agree with all of the commissioners and I think you missed, um, I think Mr. Francis said it very well. He was somewhat skeptical of why are you coming before us with a, uh, a zone change without a plan? I was beginning to wonder about that myself, but it, it's clear now, um, and also from Mr. Henrick's comments, that, you know, let, take that original thing off the table and as you plan, you know exactly what you're dealing with now. And the zoning commission still has a high degree of control of the fact that it requires the special case approval, which has that high threshold and has all those restrictions. And for those of us that have been on the commission for a while, you know, we know that section twenty has got a, a very long list of things that we then have to be complied with in addition to the additional waterfront restrictions that are on there. And I think we'll also have to just be mindful also that that area has had flooding in, in the past. Um, so, um, there's FEMA's involved in it. There's a lot of levels of regulation and make sure that whatever does come down, um, is, um, complies with the best interests of the, uh, the town and the environment and the, any of the regulatory agencies that touch that. All right, um, before I summarize the points, any other comments from commissioners? Oh, Mr. Habansky, we'll give you first, go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jay Habansky here. And, uh, just for the record and, and, and a note, I wanted to reiterate some notes that I have, that I heard here in the testimony tonight. Um, if the, if the commission is looking for, um, some reasons to back up their reason, which was, I think I heard, consistency with the plan of conservation and development. Three specific items that I heard tonight were, um, the P O C D encourages access for residents to the waterfront. Uh, number two, the commercial use i- is identified for this property in the future land use plan. And number three, the, the plan of conservation and development encourages to leverage the town's waterfront, water fronts to stimulate appropriate private development and economic growth. Thank you.
To stimulate economic growth.
And two of those items are in my staff comments. One was mentioned by the chairman, which was to, uh, drive access to the waterfront.
This is Mike Henrick too. We, we also have a, a history, an older history, but a history of that as commercial development. And it was successful at the time. Um, so we have a proven track record that, that, uh, that, that we can examine as well.
Okay, so here's what I have, uh, down as what I've heard from the commission and then we'll see if we all concur on this. So we said compliance with the plan of conservation and development, specifically noting access to the waterfront, uh, identification of using it in the plant, in, uh, commercial use in the, or waterfront use in the future land use plan and its potential to stimulate economic growth. Uh, the requirement that the special case approval and zoning control is still needed once an actual plan is formulated. Uh, the history of the site, the current occupant being a good neighbor and the traditional use of the, uh, site for a restaurant up until the fire fifteen years ago. So a proven track record that can be analyzed and, um, correcting the issue that there was a vacant lot for many years. Uh, the potential for additional parking to develop to alleviate the current situation that we have. Um, anything else I'm missing? Okay, Mr. Vigliotti, do you concur with these reasons? Yes or no will be done?
Vigliotti, I, I concur.
Okay, Mr. Francis, do you concur?
Yes, I concur.
Mr. Vacola, do you concur?
Yes, I concur.
Mr. Henrick, do you concur?
Mike Henrick, I concur.
Okay, I think we have concurrence and a collective decision here. Any further comments before we move toward a vote? If not, all in favor say aye.
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 Oppose no? Okay, carries unanimously, the zone change is approved. Okay, moving on to our work agenda, uh...
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of the June twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty meeting?
Okay, we have a motion to approve the minutes of the June twenty-fourth meeting. But Mr. Henrick, is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Francis? Uh, any discussion, corrections, changes? If not, all in favor say aye.
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 Okay. Uh, campsite review for the aforementioned properties, Jay.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is Jay Habansky. Um, a few items here, so, uh, this application was referred to the Department of Environment, uh, Energy and Environmental Protection. Uh, we had not received any feedback, uh, from, from DEEP, which is typically, uh, deemed as, uh, there are no comments for the commission. Um, the app, the application was also referred, I'm sorry, was someone saying something?
No.
Okay. Uh, the application, coastal site plan review was also referred to the Waterfront Harbor Management Commission, uh, who had an opportunity to meet and discuss this application. Uh, I believe it was July... The meeting was July eighth. Um, and to summarize, I will say, okay, I'll just read this one paragraph. The Waterfront Harbor Management Commission considered this matter during its meeting on July eighth, twenty-twenty, following discussion with the applicant and with the understanding that the proposal is, is not expected to affect the harbor management area in any significant way. The Waterfront Harbor Management Commission approved a motion to express no objection to the proposal and reserves the right to review any future development site plan for consistency with the policies of the harbor management plan. And, uh, you know, the, any, when the applicant, if and when the applicant comes back with their, uh, plan for development, uh, a subsequent coastal site plan review would be required to accompany that, that application, which would be referred to DEEP once again and which would also be referred to the Waterfront Harbor Management Commission. Um, there don't appear to be any, I mean, as there is no plan for development, there are no coastal resources that are currently in danger or potentially in danger, uh, with this policy, um, this policy moved by the zoning commission, I recommend that the, uh, the coastal site plan review, uh, be approved. Thank you.
Okay, motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Mr. Henrick, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Vigliotti? Uh, Jay, just procedurally, so if, but w- once there's an actual plan, uh, that would also have to go through a second campsite review as well as a waterfront harbor management review?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you very much. Any further discussion?
Just, Mr. Chairman, based on the, I mean, I would, I would make my approval based on the comments of, of Mr. Habansky. Um, and the, the lack of negative comment from, from the appropriate agencies and, and the, the, the fact there's no impact on the coastal resources.
And I as well, confirmation from Mr. Habansky and no negative comments. I also agree.
Everyone in agreement? Sounds like that? Okay, all in favor say aye.
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 Oppose no, carries unanimously. Okay, let me switch my screen back to that other work agenda. Sorry, guys. Okay, any accessory apartment applications or sediment and erosion controls?
No new applications.
Okay. Um, anything on projects or any other items?
No new updates, Mr. Chairman, for me.
Yeah.
Just one quick question, and, and you don't have to answer it now, but, um, the, the, uh, cellular towers, that, that, are we getting closer with that? I know that the project's moving along. Have they taken a second look at that or is that still, still in the waiting seat?
Yeah, it's Jay Habansky here, that's, is, uh, I was, I was told that once the project reaches completion, that they would bring that back up. I, I, I think you're right, they're nearing completion. Um, what I'll do is, uh, I will send a, a new email to, uh, the Chief Administrative Officer's, uh, office and, and let them know that we are still looking to engage in that conversation.
Thank you.
Mr. Vigliotti?
Uh, just, uh, can I get a little background information on this cellular towers?
Mike, that's your, you wanna go first?
Sure. So, back in the day, the cellular tower companies came to the town of Stratford, I think the zoning commission, and asked to put some of their, not towers, but their, whatever they call them, uh, to send out their signals. It was supposed to be, um, it was supposed to be hidden. It was supposed to be, uh, concealed to some extent. Over the years, it's expanded. If you look at the, at the gazebo above town hall, um, you'll probably never notice it until you look at it. I think once you look at it, it'll stand out. But they've got these things sticking out all over the place. They aren't concealed. You know, and the comment that was made back in the day was that it would maintain or, or stay within the character. And, and they've kind of, the last time they came to us, they said, well, we don't need approval because federal law or state law allows us just to upgrade when we want. So, um, it, it's hideous and it was never intended to be that way. I think, you know, they took advantage of us or we didn't word it tightly enough to restrict them. Um, so we're now looking at possibly taking them off the gazebo, which is the centerpiece of our town, of our town government, and moving it over to the, perhaps the roof at Stratford High. Um, but giving it a maltonet so we can remove it. And because it's just gonna continue to grow and grow and grow and become more, more obscene. So, um, to me, that's, that's a, it's a really beautiful feature of our town and I'd like to see it moved over there. So we're, we're just trying to get that, that accomplished.
Now, is, is that the only option? Is Stratford High or are you presenting different options? Just, you know, 'cause I don't, I kinda, I kinda don't have the background information either on that. So are there multiple locations?
Well, we turned it over and I guess Mr. Habansky can answer it better, but we turned it over to the town, to the administrative office, the CAO, and that's, that's an option we had posed. But I don't know if there's anything in the area that would give us the height, um, and, and the, the, I don't know, the clear span that the signal would, without being obstructed, the, the signal to be obstructed. So I think that might be the only option. And now that it's, it's, uh, the building's going on and it's probably tall enough to allow that to happen. But I don't know in that, that location, is it, without putting up another grand tower somewhere. You know? But that's it.
Yeah.
Mr. Habansky nodding his head, so I think...
Yeah, like I said, uh, I'll, I'll follow up and let them know that we are still interested in engaging in that conversation. and they weren't opposed to the, kind of, having the conversation, so, um, I'll let them know that we're interested and I'll, I'll return with any feedback that I get.
Excellent. Okay, our next admin, administrative session is August twelfth. Um, I don't know that we have too much to go over, so, um, we'll keep you informed and let you know if that's needed, but it's probably a good bet we probably don't need it. Um, and then, um, I guess our next regular meeting would be August twenty-sixth. I know we're in the midst of the summertime, nobody's really traveling, but in case you're not gonna be here, please let us know so that we can make sure when the alternates are available. And we're just monitoring, um, okay, thanks, Mike. Uh, we're just monitoring the situation as far as when we would get access to town hall to redo, to get back into, um, the regular meetings. Uh, but it's, you know, everything is day by day around here, so, um, I appreciate all the commissioners and for those members of the public that are still online. I appreciate everybody's patience, um, you know, we're doing the best we can at the circumstances to, um, move the town's business forward, and, um, and my appreciation to everyone who participated and provided comment on the application. Okay, uh, we'll take a motion to adjourn. Mr. Vigliotti, is there a second?
To adjourn?
Yep.
I'll make a second.
Second by Mr. Henrik, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, carries unanimously, we're outta here at eight eleven, have a good week, everybody.
You safe?
Have a good night, guys.
Bye.